If I could have everybody take their seats and all the aldermen to come up to the dais, please. We're ready, Madam Clerk.
I'd like to call the July 15th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to Order at 7:08 PM. Roll call, Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Felix.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
I need a motion and recommendation to seat a Chair Presiding Officer Mayor for the July 15th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I so move. I second.
I'm sorry, for the regular meeting.
I second Alderman Hayes.
Who's first?
Alderman Bolton.
Alderman Bolton.
Second.
Alderman Hayes. Martinez. For Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get to the invocation.
Those in favor.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Before we get to the invocation tonight, which we will in just a minute, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We are currently under a tornado watch. It has not gotten to the level of a tornado warning, which the sirens will go off. It is of the utmost importance that everybody is safe and everybody is calm. We want to make sure that everybody is okay. So, there is a very good chance that if we get an indication that a tornado is approaching, or that there is going to be a warning escalated up from a watch, that we will have to evacuate calmly the chambers here tonight. So, I just want to prepare everybody for that. If we do that, based on the weather forecast that we're seeing, we might have to adjourn the meeting. If the meeting has to be adjourned, the items that you see on the agenda tonight will be taken up at the next city council meeting. So, I just want to prepare everybody for that, and again, reiterate the point that I might have to interrupt somebody who's speaking, and I would just ask everybody to remain calm. We will give you direction at that point on where we're going to go. Thank you, everybody. Now for the invocation by Pastor Linda Urban.
Good evening, everyone. I ask that you would all just bow your heads in prayer. Father God, in the name of Jesus Christ, your Son, I stand before you, representing your council people, and that you will preside over this meeting. I pray for the mental health and the physical health and the spiritual health of each person that presides in the Waukegan City Council meetings. We lift up prayers for Mayor Taylor in her absence. I also pray for each person who is a part of the official day-to-day operations in the city of Waukegan, the policemen, the firemen, even those that work as city maintenance and highway personnel. I pray that you would bless their families. I pray that you would bless their finances, and through all of this, I pray that they would see you, Father, and that the men and women would be men and women of integrity, that they will be trusted when they are being seen and when they are not. I pray, Father, for peace between all departments, that they would work cohesively together to get the job done, that would make Waukegan a better place to live and work. I pray for all Lake County, which would include Gurnee, Graveslake, Round Lake Beach, North Chicago, Great Lakes, Zion Beach Park, Winthrop Harbor, and surrounding areas of Lake County that have not been mentioned, but you know each of us individually, Father. I pray for honesty. I pray that they would turn to you in secret, that when they prayed, they will be rewarded openly. Thank you, Father, for the privilege to stand before you and your people, to ask a blessing upon them during this time of world crisis, and realizing that what goes on in the White House trickles down and affects each city and how they govern the people in their communities. I thank you, Father, that all things are working together for the good of them that love you and are called according to your purpose, as you stated in Romans 8:28. Glory, honor, and praise belongs to you, Father, and we thank you that all provisions are needed through Waukegan, and the city council and its constituents will be met through food, clothing, shelter, protection, and health needs. That you, Father, we thank you for the Lake County Health Department. We thank you for the Vista Hospital. We thank you, Father, again for the Waukegan City Council. For all that you have done, and we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise in Jesus Christ's mighty name. Hallelujah and amen.
Amen. Time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's time for Mayor's comments. Welcome to the July 15th, 2024 Waukegan City Council Meeting. The agenda, for anybody who's interested, is posted online on Friday before the city council meetings. In addition, you can go to the city website, waukeganil.gov, for meeting agendas and other important information about our city government. This past weekend, Scoop returned to downtown Waukegan, and as usual, we had a great weekend of classic cars, great food, and live entertainment. The city thanks the Waukegan Police Department and all city employees who worked so hard to ensure a safe and festive environment for everybody. In September, the city's excited to partner with Juntos, a Waukegan nonprofit, to support the Mexican and Latin American Independence Day Parade in downtown Waukegan on Sunday, September 15th. The parade kicks off at Washington Street at noon. More information can be found at juntosnfp.com. The festival that same day is hosted by Pro Football. Both of these organizations submitted their applications this past January and have been coordinating with both city staff and each other to ensure that the festivities are fun, safe, and welcoming for the entire Waukegan and greater Lake County communities. As always, you can find our events and more in the city calendar at waukeganil.gov and on the social media pages. You can also sign up for notifications in eNews on our website or by emailing thecity@eNews@waukeganil.gov. If you're interested in learning more about the city of Waukegan's Energy Transition Community Grant and its plans for addressing the economic and social impacts of the coal plant closure, there will be a public meeting tomorrow from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at the Ray Bradbury Room at the Waukegan Public Library. I'd encourage everybody to attend. Our Planning and Zoning Department hosted an open house information session at Trinity AME Church last week regarding the former Fansteel Brownfield site. City staff and environmental consultants were available to discuss the cleanup and answer questions. As we advance with the project, the public comment period for the cleanup will be open from July 1st to July 30th, 2024. Comments can be entered into the record through mail or email to the following address. Attention, Rachel Cantin, C-A-N-T-I-N, City of Waukegan, 100 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois 60085, or you can email at planning@waukeganil.gov. We would encourage you to use the following phrase for the subject line, "Former Fansteel Brownfield Cleanup Public Comment." As part of the Waukegan Police Department's Summer Initiative, the police launched a comprehensive plan with increased police presence to address crime and violence proactively across all city divisions. This means a significant uptick in our traffic enforcement in the neighborhoods. I'd like to thank Chief Navarro for his leadership in this area. This summer, we have our children out of school, and the police are working around the clock to keep our most vulnerable citizens and families safe all summer long. The Animal Control Facility has an open house July 28th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. All are welcome. For questions, you can reach Animal Control at 847-599-2690. At this point, I'm going to call up Deputy Chief Neal and Deputy Chief Mandrow to update us on some of the events over this past weekend.
Good evening, Council and attendees. I would like to quickly address a situation in the early hours of July 7th, approximately 3:30 in the morning, at our train station located at 95 Spring Street, where unfortunately, we had a homicide. We would like to report that our Investigations Division, on a combined effort, were able to bring two parties of interest into custody. Although this investigation remains open, we do believe it was a targeted event. It wasn't random, and we do have the investigation going in a good direction based off of what happened. I'm not going to mention names. There's a press release about it, but I'm confident that justice will be served.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Anything else?
In reference to the 2004 Scoop, the Waukegan Police Department was present on both days. We had 64 officers, including command staff, present on Friday. 61 sworn officers, including command staff, on Saturday. We were assisted by the SERC team, Lake County Sheriff's Office, Lake County Sheriff Reserves, North Chicago Police Department, the Lake Bluff Police Department. So, special thanks to all those that assisted us with keeping everybody safe. Friday, there was two subjects that were detained. One was charged with a weapons offense. The other one, we're waiting for crime lab results for formal charges. On Saturday, we had one weapons offense arrest. So, three arrests total, which is pretty good for that event. So, thank you to all that helped out.
Thanks, guys, for your service. We really appreciate you making the event a success. Chief Bridges?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Hayes, Council. Just wanted to say a quick statement. On behalf of the mayor and myself, we want to express our immense pride in the Waukegan city staff for their phenomenal execution of the Waukegan Scoop event. A special round of applause for them should be given to our dispatchers, finance, Special Events Coordinator Minelli, Fire Chief Pazir, Police Chief Navarro, their dedicated administrators, and the tireless clerical staff. Let's not forget the crucial role our lakefront coordinator, Lisa May, and the beach rangers played in managing Waukegan's gospel on the beach. I would like for David, Director David Motley, and Naya, come on up, please. Come on up. We just want to make sure to thank you, a round of applause. We would be absolutely remiss if we didn't acknowledge the extensive efforts of Director David Motley and Assistant Naya in coordinating the Waukegan Scoop event, which requires a level of expertise and organization that rivals a major A-list concert. Waukegan is the A-lister. Great job. Great job. Thank you. Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. The combined leadership and the outstanding work of the entire city staff ensured the success of our beloved community event. The mayor wanted me to also express how incredibly impressed we were by the assistance received from our neighboring law enforcement agents. Finally, I remind you all that this was prepared and executed, this event, while this staff was doing their normal daily duties, performing the work that they normally do. But something that you don't often get to see was the exceptional cooperation between our department leaders and our unions. SEIU, MAP, PBLC, IAFF Local 473, Public Works Local 150 made this event a success. Over the last few years, this relationship has grown tremendously strong, and we believe they deserve a round of applause for everything they did behind the scenes to make our city of Waukegan shine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, with that, I'm going to hand off to Clerk Kilkelly the resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments.
Thank you, Chair Hayes. I have tonight a proclamation celebrating Marcelino Diaz for his 100th birthday. Whereas, the city council of Waukegan, Illinois are pleased to recognize Marcelino Diaz on his 100th birthday. And whereas Diaz came alone from Puerto Rico in 1951 to make a better life for himself, having no direct flight from Puerto Rico to Chicago, he flew to New York and took a bus to Chicago. Whereas, he found his first job in 1951 at Greece Fleeger Tanning &amp; Company, and later in 1952, found a career at Naval Station Great Lakes as a warehouse worker. After saving enough money, he returned to Puerto Rico to marry his wife Minerva Ramos on December 15th, 1952. And whereas returning with his bride, they went on to raise a family of nine children in Waukegan from 1952 until his retirement in 1985. After 32 years of service at the Naval Station Warehouse, Diaz was able to retire and move back to Puerto Rico until 2003. And whereas, Diaz enjoyed 58 years of marriage until his wife's passing, April 11th, 2011. He spent his time playing dominoes and reminiscing about the past. His legacy continues with 17 grandchildren and 36 great-grandchildren, and now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize Marcelino Diaz on his 100th birthday adopted this 15th day of July, 2024.
Congratulations. All right, well, we are here today to recognize Marcelino Diaz, a sectarian who has been in Waukegan for 100 years. If that is not a remarkable milestone, then I don't know what it is. Along with this beautiful family, we are here to give you recognition, to give you your flowers while you are here today. So well-deserved. And from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of the city council, on behalf of our mayor, we wish you, first of all, a happy birthday, and we thank you for your presence here on earth and the many more years you have to come. But today is your day, and on behalf of the city, again, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude for all you've done. You've been my father when my father's no longer around. Whew. So, I thank you. Thank you. God bless you. You have a great, wonderful family. So, we are here to give you this resolution. Okay? And then, so here you go. All right, no problem.
No. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And thank you, everybody, for living here in this place. I appreciate that very, very much. God bless.
And we appreciate you. Myrna? All right. I would like Myrna, the eldest, to speak on behalf of the family.
Well, all I can say is thank you very much for being here. Thank you to the city of Waukegan and Tony, who we grew up with. It was a blast to have my dad out here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to take a picture of the family. If we can get everybody in the family to take a picture. Right here, picture here.
Gracias, Mr. Diaz. Now, if you want to take your dad home, go right ahead. It's okay. All right. Oh, thank you. No. We're going to let the Diaz family go ahead and leave. Thank you so much. If anybody would like to sit up closer, you may. You can spread out now. Okay, thank you. We're on to the second. We're on to our second proclamation. It's a motion to approve Alderman Felix's draft and sponsorship of Resolution for Ceasefire Awareness and Advocacy in the city of Waukegan, Illinois. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to Alderman Felix.
So, this one actually wasn't the final one. That was cosponsored by myself, Alderman Bolton, and Alderman Guzman. So, I spoke to our legal counsel. I'm going to be reading the one that was the final one. So, just read it.
So, that's not being, you're not going to talk about that tonight? You have a different one?
So, I'm going to read the one that was the final one that was sponsored by the Alderman. So, the title is the Resolution to Promote Ceasefire Awareness and Advocate for Peace in the Conflict Between the Palestinian People and the Israeli People. Whereas, the ongoing conflict between the Palestinian people and the Israeli people in the region of Israel and Palestine has resulted in significant loss of life, injury, and displacement, causing immersed pain and suffering to individuals on both sides. Whereas, the city of Waukegan is committed to the principles of peace, human dignity, and the protection of human rights for all people regardless of nationality, ethnicity, and religion. Whereas, the city of Waukegan recognizes the importance of international peace and stability and the role that local communities can play in focus and fostering, understanding, and advocating for peaceful resolutions to conflicts. Whereas, the residents of Waukegan come from Whereas, the residents of Waukegan come from diverse backgrounds, and many have personal or familial ties to the regions affected by the conflict, amplifying the local community's concern and empathy for those suffering abroad. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Waukegan, one, expresses deep concern for the ongoing violence and humanitarian crisis resulting from the conflict between the Palestinian people and the Israeli people in the region of Israel and Palestine, and extends heartfelt sympathy to all those affected by the conflict. Two, calls for the immediate and permanent ceasefire in the region to prevent further loss of life and create a conducive environment for dialogue and negotiation towards a sustainable peace. Three, encourages residents of Waukegan to stay informed about the conflict and its impacts, and to engage in constructive dialogue and activities that promote peace, understanding, and solidarity. Four, supports the efforts of the national and international organizations working towards humanitarian relief, conflict, resolution, and the protection of the human rights in the affected regions. Five, commits to raising awareness within the community about the realities of the conflict and the importance of a peaceful resolution through educational programs, community discussions, and partnerships with relevant organizations. Six, urges the U.S. government to intensify diplomatic efforts aimed at facilitating a ceasefire and support a just and lasting resolution that respects the rights and aspirations of both Palestinian and Israelis. Designates July... Yes, seven, designates July would be today, 2024, as Peace and Awareness Day in Waukegan, encouraging schools, community groups, and local organizations to participate in activities that promote peace, empathy, and mutual understanding. Be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution be sent to the President of the United States and the Secretary of State and the Illinois Congressional delegation to convey the concerns and aspirations of the residents of Waukegan regarding the conflict between the Palestinian people and the Israeli people in the region of Israel and Palestine. That's it.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the draft.
I saw move.
Motion by Alderman Bolton. Do I have a second?
Can I second?
Is there any way I can amend this as far as, I mean, I think that the mayor should be present in this moment, so I'd like to hold it over if we can.
So, real quick, in terms of amending, it's already been read, so I don't think an amendment would be appropriate at this time. Any amendment should have come prior to it being read into the record just a few moments ago. The mayor doesn't vote on the proclamation of the resolution, so any individuals that would vote are present, so I don't see any reason why we should delay what people have been coming to City Council now for several months to hear. So I think we can vote on it.
What happens if the vote is a tie?
There's nine Aldermen, so I don't foresee there being a tie. But I've been wrong before. So at this point, I think the appropriate thing to do is call for a vote.
Call for a vote.
Alderman Martinez, are you willing to withdraw the holdover? Or can we vote on it tonight? It sounds like people want to at least get a vote, closure one way or the other. I'm ready. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
I'm sorry?
Present.
All right. Alderman Donaworth.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman. Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
No.
Alderman Felix. Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Abstain.
Sir, sir, please, please calm down.
The no's have it. It fails.
All right, based on our comments earlier and what everybody can see out the window, I do not want to undercut the importance of audience time, especially tonight. However, we have city business that we need to get to. We will have audience time so long as the weather permits. In the meantime, I would entertain a motion to move up the consent agenda and new business to try to get these items addressed and then have audience time. I'm open to comment.
I need a first and a second?
Thank you for your comments. If we could have, you get one warning, one warning. Could we have the police remove the individuals, please?
Ceasefire now!
Shut it down!
What do we want? We want a ceasefire now. What do we want?
Ceasefire!
What do we want?
Ceasefire!
When do we want it?
Now!
When do we want it?
Now!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
I said if we don't get it?
Shut it down!
What do we want?
Ceasefire!
What do we want?
Ceasefire!
When do we want it?
Now!
When do we want it?
Now!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
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 Ceasefire now!
Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now!
All right, A through H, without me having to read through them, is everybody open to voting?
I saw move.
For the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Oh, now I need, I need a roll call.
Oh, yep, yep. So roll call just on the consent agenda generally.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passes for the items under new business, items A through R, I believe. Can I have a motion? Can I get a first and a second to omnibus the new business, and then we'll talk about the items that we might need to pull out?
I'll first.
First, second?
Second from Alderman Martinez, a first from Alderwoman Florian. If there's any items that would like to be taken out, okay, item A, anything else?
K. Item K.
We have item A and item K. Is there anything else? Going once, twice, three times. Okay, can I have, do I need a? All right, we are not going to read the items that were not pulled out, so roll call, please, on items B through J and L through R.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, agenda item A looks, we have that and K. K's the traffic calming policy. I suspect there's going to be some conversation around that that is probably better held over, which I'll take a motion for, but can we address item A, which is an ordinance creating a Class F1 package beer, wine, and gasoline sales liquor license for Waukegan Bay located at 2930 Belvedere Road. This matter was presented to Community Development on July 1, 2024. Can I have a first?
First.
First from Alderman Donaworth, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Turner, roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'll take a first, or I'll just take any motion to hold over item K from anybody. Alderman Turner, you wanted it pulled out. You want to hold it over?
What is that, K?
Traffic calming.
Why are we going to hold it over?
I think there's just going to be a broader discussion about it tonight and the weather...
I want to take it for a vote.
Oh, you want to take it for a vote?
We've been talking about this for 10 months, 11 months, so no, let's vote on it.
So it's voting as drafted, as the traffic calming policy has been drafted, right?
Uh, no, it's going to be amended.
We want to amend this.
All right. I'm just going to speak generally from a safety standpoint, given the weather outside. I know you want to vote. I don't want to hold it over either, but I think, given the weather and what's to come, based on what we've been told, that we should hold it over to the next meeting.
No, I looked at the radar, the rain that went past is gone, the next rain that's coming is going to the north of us, is going to hit Kenosha and Milwaukee. We got plenty of time, Tom. We've wasted plenty of time. Let's get this done tonight.
All right, so what are the amendments? Alderman Guzman?
Yes, I want to amend the, from what, from what the policy was, what they were going to put it as, as originally proposed, if an Alderman wants it, he gets it. If an Alderman doesn't want it, he doesn't need to get it.
Yes, it should be at the Alderman's discretion. This is what we requested when we put our names on the motion or the email to put it on the agenda. It was then, you know, thrown over the fence to staff to craft the policy, but the policy that the Aldermen are asking for is that if we request a traffic calming device that would include speed pumps, speed bumps, rumble strips, and go-arounds, you call them, that we can, we can get those at the Alderman's discretion.
Okay, well, that's not how the policy's drafted, so that would require amendments.
Exactly, exactly. What's happened, Tom, I'm sorry, let me explain, sir.
Go ahead.
That's exactly why we're saying this, because what we asked for is not what's on the agenda. It's something else, and we don't want that, we want what we asked for.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Alderwoman Florian.
I'm sorry to prolong this, but weren't the reasons, I need to talk to Bob and probably Chris, weren't the reasons that it was changed because we needed a procedure to go through in order, Bob's shaking and said yes. We need to have a procedure to go through. You can't just arbitrarily ask for traffic changes. Like, I know when I first became an Alderman, I wanted a stop sign a certain place. They're like, you can't just get a stop sign. There's a process you have to go through.
Right, and that's what we're asking the process, we've described the process that we want. If we ask for it and the request comes from an Alderman, yeah, if you want, you know, we can modify that and say the request has to come from two Aldermen.
Understood. Okay, listen, at this point, at the risk of upsetting you, Alderman Turner, we have staff here that need to get home. We have city resources, police and fire predominantly, that could, at this point, potentially be better utilized in the community. I think that we should allow these individuals to do their job, get home to their families, and we should take this up at the next meeting, so I would like to hold it over until the next meeting.
I agree. I think that the staff should be released and allowed to go home. There's no need for them to remain here, but we are tasked with passing legislation. We've been going around and around with this for 10, 11 months.
Understood. Extenuating circumstances, though, so that none of us could have predicted.
I'll put a motion to override that holdover.
Second. Motion to override requires six votes. Clerk, could you call the, could you call the vote to, on the override of the holdover?
Alderman Turner.
What are we voting on?
The override, the holdover.
Yes to keep considering it, no to move it two weeks based on the extenuating circumstances.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
No.
Felix. Newsom.
No.
Motion to override fails. Motion to override fails. Item will appear on the next agenda in two weeks.
All right, in lieu of Alderman time, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
First from Alderwoman Bolton, the second. Second from Alderman Donaworth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adjourned at 8:09. Thank you, everybody, for your understanding.
Based on the fact that we're getting very close to a tornado warning, we will be moving people out of the building. Please follow the directions.